Are we ready? Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands law and order, and to this world with which we come.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the meeting held October 13th, 2020?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. No one was signed up, correct that? Thank you. So we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion, the agenda is approved. Onto the good news report.
Good evening. For more than a decade now, the Sioux Falls School District has been very committed in its substantial resources in ensuring that our schools are as safe as possible from all known and unknown threats. The district's comprehensive Safe and Secure Schools Plan includes public health risks also, along with the more common man-made and natured-made threats. So Risk Manager Bob Bray is here with us this evening to provide the school board with an update about some of the recent training and actions implemented to maintain the well-being of students and staff.
Thank you, Deanne.
It's coming, there it is. Well, good evening, thanks for the opportunity to present to you this year's Safe and Secure Program. By way of review, what you see on the screen is our overall Safe and Secure Program. You'll note that the key to our program is its foundation, and that's our education and training, not only of our students, but also of our faculty and staff, as well as administrative personnel. Clearly, organization is key to that, as well as the leadership of the organization, providing for, as Deanne has indicated, a robust program that's very focused not only at the school level, but also at the administrative level as well. So, there are a number of pillars, I won't read each of the pillars to you, but I will highlight a couple of those areas as we made some changes or in the process of making some changes in those particular areas. So, in the area of facility design, I know Jeff Kreider would highlight to you that in our new school buildings, we've added a couple of new features that will be instrumental in providing awareness, alert, and response for active shooter type of incidents, as well as all other types of emergencies that might take place in those schools. I would highlight for you that we base our program off a risk assessment that I do in collaboration with our first responders, primarily our law enforcement school resource officers. And so every year, we take a real hard look a couple of times formally and provide a report on what that risk assessment provides, but also throughout the school year, we are continuously looking for best practices across the country and community, and updating our response plans as necessary. We still identify with about 27 different types of emergencies or hazards that could befall the Sioux Falls School District, as well as the community at writ large. And so our plans are based on ensuring that we can respond to those type of incidents. And it's not just our training programs, it's not just our policies, practices, and procedures, it's our materials as well that help us to respond. And I'll touch on a couple of those here as I begin to close. You'll note a number of the hazards there, in the past few years, past recent few years, we noticed a spike in the cyber type of events taking place. For whatever reason, this year, I can say that we really haven't seen many of those, if any of those, type of incidents taking place. That's good news. Generally, they have not resulted in an actual emergency taking place, but more a threat from an external source that's caused us to have to activate our response plans. So that's good news. I will say, however, that throughout the school year, we have our administrators experience a wide range of events that take place that involve our school resource officers, not only in responding, but in assisting our administrators to resolve those situations as they might take place. So that's one thing that I would point out to you. I would also identify here for you that clearly COVID has had a significant impact. But it's important to note that even while we are in this response to COVID-19, all those other threats and conditions continue. Nothing has changed from that perspective, and so we want to make sure that we're not only prepared for those responses, but now we add the necessary but now we add the necessary elements of preparing for COVID on top of them as well. And that really impacts on how we train and prepare for those type of emergencies as well. So I would point to you this year, some unique things that have taken place. Working with our first responders, as you're all familiar, we've had evacuation drills, where by South Dakota state law, we're required to conduct fire drills, lockdown drills, and tornado drill. So in collaboration with the fire department, with our school resource officers, and still meeting that South Dakota Confining Law requirement, we modified the procedures for the conduct of those evacuation drills. And without reading all the detail there for you, we are using our video training capability to educate and build some muscle memory, if you will, in our student body. It has been a hallmark of our program that these exercises, evacuation drills, have built that capability within students from kindergarten through 12, so that when an emergency happens, almost better than the adults, our students know how to respond. So our concern in this last school, in this current school year, is that we don't lose that muscle memory through this response to COVID-19. So a great deal of collaboration has taken place with those first response agencies to make sure that we still train and educate our students, our staff, and our visitors as to how to respond in the event that there is some type of emergency taking place. The fire department's done a great job of putting some videos together out there. And so in addition to the response for fire drills, they're also enhancing their Learn Not to Burn program through their video training programs. We've also enhanced our training for our staff. We have three basic programs online now that we educate our administrators in their role and responsibility during emergencies, our clerical, and those personnel who are assigned to sweep teams, reunification teams, in their roles and responsibilities as well. And then on top of that, we have our home visitor training program. So those itinerant staff of ours who are out in the community on a regular basis also have a means of educating themselves as to the kinds of conditions that they might be exposed to in the event that there's an emergency. On top of all that is our training for National Incident Management System, the incident command system, where we document, particularly for our administrators, their training in the National Incident Management System. It's key to our response in cooperation with our first response, first responders. So when they arrive at the scene, they have some expectation as to what to expect in the incident command system with our key personnel. This year, we've added an additional feature, working in collaboration with our IT department and also metro communications. You notice on this slide, on your left-hand side of the screen, is the typical response that an administrator will apply in the event that there's a unruly student, if you will, a disciplinary issue that might come up. What we've added to that process is the Threat Assessment Model that was developed by Virginia Tech. It has been a part of the National Threat Assessment by the U.S. Secret Service, recommended for school districts. And so we're in kind of the incipient phase of that application. And what we are doing is a data search for those events that might be taking place for a student that might highlight that there's an issue that we should address or make sure that we're addressing. And so in the right-hand column, you'll see that process that does not interfere with the role and responsibility of the administrator, the school, the school resource officers, social workers and counselors, but only amplifies what might be available to us out there in the data world so that we don't leave any stone uncovered. Note that for a number, a couple of years now, I guess, we have been receiving all the 911 reports from metro communications. We're now taking that data and putting it into a spreadsheet, identifying where we might have trends and issues taking place, not only with students, but in various schools as well. And so we're providing that information to our school resource officers, as well as our administrators, so they can also see where maybe there's a need for special attention. And again, enhancing not only our response, but our preparation, and if you will, our risk aversion in the event that something might be taking place out there that we're just not seeing on a regular basis. Couple, couple of quick things here, modernization. Key to the success of our program has been the ability to notify and alert when an emergency is taking place. And so we're enhancing our radio communication network, and as we build our new schools, they'll be coming online as with digital radios. And eventually, as time goes on, we'll begin replacing our analog radio system with a digital network that is much more reliable, has greater clarity, if you will, throughout the district. So we've begun that process now. We'll, we'll do that with the two new schools in particular. We've also begun doing it at Patrick and Axstill Park as their buildings have required the need for that upgrade. So with that, that's kind of a down and dirty in where we're at today with our Safe and Secure Program. It's an ongoing program. Fortunately, this year has been, as I say, relatively stable from an emergency management perspective. That said, we've actually had a number of incidents where, in a couple of cases, we've had, because of external events, had to go into shelter in place. So our system is constantly being tested on a daily basis. And I, and I report to you that it is robust, that our first-line personnel, those clericals, those administrators out there are well-trained and are using the system to make sure we have a safe and secure learning environment for our students. Are there any questions? To me?
Thank you so much, and all you and your team has done over, in the past, as well as especially this year with the transition with COVID being added to your plate, both here at the school district, as well as at Southeast Tech. I just really commend you for all of that work and making this go as smoothly as possible with all of the issues being faced. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a, oh, this is good news, not in a report, so I don't have to ask for acknowledgement. There were no new conflicts of interest, so we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda, items 11A through H. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. Onto the supplemental consent agenda. Items A1 through 3, Claims to Sanford Healthcare. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. Onto 12B1 through 2, Claims to Avera Healthcare. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Onto 12C, Acknowledgement of the Change of Providers from Avera eCare Telemedicine Services to Avera eCare LLC. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with another abstention from Board Member Parker. Onto reports of the superintendent.
Yep, first up tonight is Doug Morrison. He'll give us the most recent update on our fall enrollment report.
Good evening. Nice to be with you tonight. If you recall, about six weeks ago, I gave you a preliminary view of what we, where we felt enrollment would land. And so at the end of this week, Dr. Stavum will have to sign off on our final enrollment because that's what determines our state aid. And so we've been diligently reconciling with them. So this should be very close to final. Here's a look at it, where we're looking, we're looking at a K through 12 enrollment right now, about 23,912, which is about 274 less than where we were at last year. And you can see the biggest differences being in the K through 5 category, which is how I reported preliminary. That's where we saw the biggest decrease, and I'll get into some reasons for that. 6th through 8th grade, middle school, we saw an increase of about 54. In high school, we saw an increase of about 200. And then looking at our junior kindergarten and our pre-K numbers, they were pretty close, a little bit down in pre-K, but not substantially. And so looking at a total enrollment, pre-K through 12, of just shy of 25,000 students, which would be 315 less than where we were at this time last year. Looking at sort of over time, you can see a graph. What's important here to note is probably, what's happening is we did forecast back pre-COVID pandemic, we forecasted to grow about 200 students this school year. And so when we decreased by 274, that means we're just shy of 500 students short of where we thought we would be. The significance of that, of course, is that we receive state aid for all of those students. So it's probably $2.5 million roughly that will be short of what we originally projected from a state aid perspective. Looking at it from a, by grade, as I indicated before, the K through 5 bucket is where we saw the biggest loss, and especially the kindergarten bucket, where we were about 166 students short. And then, again, a little bit of growth in middle school and a little bit of growth in high school. But that kind of gives you some sense of the breakout, mostly in the early grades where we're seeing the decrease. I reported to you the virtual enrollment. So per our final numbers, we'll be right at about 2,500 students, or about 11% of our total enrollment enrolled in the virtual academy. And that number is really pretty consistent across every, every grade level in that 10 to 12, 13% range. So pretty similar to what we showed you with the initial results. One thing that we've seen this year is that we are able to track the homeschool enrollment because there has to be something filed with the state that there, that parents are going to homeschool their students. So we're able to track those students that are living in our district. And you can see that this year, as of this enrollment count, about just shy of 900 homeschool children. And at this time last year, we were about at 637. So an increase of over 200 homeschool enrolled. And then you can see that across the grade levels again, mostly in, and really in the K through 5 bucket again, is where we're seeing those significant changes, not so much in the, once you get into middle school and beyond. One other interesting thing that's going on is another factor that's causing a decrease is our open enrollment. We have a open enrollment population of students that open and enroll into the Sioux Falls School District. So you can see last year, at this time, we had about 950-some students that opened and enrolled into the district. And this year, we're sitting at about 829, so a decrease of about 126 students. And that's really, again, much of it in the early grade levels. And then on the right-hand side, you can see by district. So we are able to know, we know from what district they're coming into. And so you can see some of the larger ones, like the Brandon's, the Harrisburgs, the T's, some of our neighboring contiguous school districts, you can see how that's changing this year. So probably a lot of, especially in the early grades, parents electing to just keep their home, their kid in their home district if they were going to perhaps go virtually. So I look at it this way, when you really kind of summarize everything, we had forecasts of growth of about 198 students. Our actual growth was, we decreased by 274, so we had a shortfall of 472. And really, you were able to trace it to three basic factors. The homeschool enrollment increase, the open enrollment decrease to, into the district. And then if I take, if I take out those two factors out of the kindergarten enrollment, it's basically about 100 kindergartners less than, into the district than what we saw last year. So those are really the three buckets that make up that shortfall. And so that would conclude the report. I would ask you to acknowledge the 2020 enrollment report, and I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you for getting the information on the homeschool and open enrollment. That really does help put numbers better into perspective of where our shortfalls are. So hopefully for next year, we can better plan and have the right classrooms and teachers, et cetera, next year if we're back to a more normal type of school situation. So appreciate it. But obviously, that shortfall equals dollars, and as you pointed out, over $2.5 million that we had planned to have in our budget is not in our budget as of this time.
Yeah, I think, you know, you think, oh, it's 104 kindergarten kids, but that's like a four-section school of just kindergartners. And so as we look at next year, you know, we can maybe assume that some of those, like you talked about before, were people that just decided to hold back and wait. And so we get our normal class of kindergartners, and then we add the 104. I mean, that's not going to be at one school, but that's still going to make an impact, I think, overall to our classrooms across the districts. And so having some type of a plan, whether that's, I know we've thrown out a couple of different random ideas, do we have a preregistration for kindergarten and then a regular registration? Or what does that look like so that we can be well-prepared for that? I wonder about the open enrollment. I think about the number of people who perhaps are even working from home. And so is it easier for their kid to get on their bus and go to their home district when that parent's working from home than it would have been for them to maybe drive to work and drop them off? And so I think there's some different logistical reasons why we might see some of those, those changes as well. And we can adapt to those, but still know that, obviously, we have great programs that even with COVID are still up and running and full speed in our district here. And so, you know, we are still interested in people who want to come from those districts and experience those things too. So, yeah, interesting numbers.
Any other comments?
Moving to acknowledge.
Thank you. I have a motion to acknowledge. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor of acknowledgement of the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Doug.
Okay, next we'll ask Deanne Conrad to come up and give us a report that talks about who those numbers are, with a demographic report that shows a little bit more about the characteristics of our population this year.
Thank you, Dr. Stavum. It'll pop on there. As mentioned, once a fall, enrollment count is complete. We update the district demographic PowerPoint each year at this time, and really serves as a snapshot for the year when we go out and talk with service clubs or the cities sometimes will want information. Grant-making entities and such are all seeking data specific to the Sioux Falls School District. So this is that report and sort of combines a bunch of information that is pertinent to the students and the staff in our schools. Many thanks to the directors and supervisors. I knock on everyone's doors asking for information, and they all come through. And then we're able to put it in a, in a nice format such as this. So thanks to all who collaborated on this effort. Of course, at the center of our school district is our vision and mission to educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world. The vision provides more detail that we wish to provide opportunities and challenges for each student to succeed as a lifelong learner. We can't do that on our own here in this building. Obviously, we value our highly trained and committed workforce, our teachers, our EAs, custodians, child nutrition custodians, child nutrition workers, it takes everyone to make a public school work. And so, we very much appreciate the contributions of all of our staff out there who come alongside our students to provide a quality education. And then, we recognize that we are a key contributor to the social, civic, and economic foundation of Sioux Falls. With strong education systems, you have a strong community, business atmosphere as well, and vice versa. When the businesses are strong, then your public schools are strong as well. So, we recognize those partnerships and thank those also in the community who come alongside us to provide this education. Supporting our vision and mission is, of course, our strategic plan. You should be familiar with those priorities that have been outlined for the last several years in the strategic plan, those being student outcomes, our staff, school culture and climate, and community engagement. And as you know, with all of the work done in the past several years regarding our need for space, we added facilities and fiscal management on there, and so that, of course, is one of our priorities as well. Some of our long-range work will start right after the first of this next year. Looking at those priorities, retooling things, coming up with new priorities or advancing the priorities that were previously listed in the strategic plan. Dr. Stavum recognized upon her arrival that we are coming up on our one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Sioux Falls School District. And wouldn't that be great if we were able to launch the strategic plan for the future as a celebration of that one hundred and fifty years and moving us forward into the district? So, or into the future. So, we look forward to that continued work, and our community can look forward to that as well, as we'll be continuing engagement and asking questions about what their priorities are as well. This is a slide that is reflective of the information Deb Morrison just provided to you. Enrollment is down slightly for the reasons he stated. Of course, COVID did have something to do with that, and there are various other factors as well. Not a huge surprise, but of course, an adjustment nonetheless regarding, you know, our budgeting for, for the future. You can see we had great, strong growth year over year for the past ten years, nine years, and then the result of COVID. So, that is where we're sitting for enrollment. Always interesting is our student diversity. Currently, we have thirteen percent of our student body reporting as Hispanic, twelve point eight percent as Blacks, six point four percent multiracial, Native American at four point four, Asian at three point one, Pacific Islander holding steady at point zero one. And our white and then combined diverse numbers flipped just slightly. So, we were sixty point eight last year in the white or Caucasian, and thirty-nine point two in the diverse category. And so, the point, the tenth points there changed. So, we are at sixty point two percent and thirty-nine point eight percent diverse. So, similar, but still inching closer to greater diversity in the Sioux Falls School In terms of our staff demographics, we have eighteen hundred and four teachers, and these are classroom teachers, they are nurses, social workers, and we call it teachers with a capital T, meaning several other folks fall underneath that category as well, eighteen hundred and four. Sixty-seven percent of those in that group have a master's degree or beyond. That has remained consistent over the past several years. Our non-teaching staff totals thirteen hundred and seventy. If you add up those numbers, you see it is not equal to thirty-three eighteen. However, thirty-three eighteen also includes some substitute teaching staff that we have hired on a consistent basis as well. So, those are the full-time or regularly-paid members of the Sioux Falls School District, thirty-three hundred and eighteen. New this year, Dr. Stavum asked for some additional information on our teachers and the type of experience, the length of experience they have. Sixty-nine teachers are in their very first year. What a year to begin, right? Talk about resiliency and their, I can just imagine their, their classrooms are looking different than probably what they thought they were going to be when they started their education to become a teacher. A hundred and eighty-two in the first one to three years, and then you can see our numbers increase there. And no, that is not a typo. We do have nine in the forty-one to fifty-year category. We have one person with fifty-one years of experience. And I had to double-check and recheck. I'll call out that gentleman. He's, I think, destined for sainthood, I'm guessing. His name is Paul Hanson. He's a music instructor, band instructor, and splits his time. I'll probably get it wrong. I think it's Eugene Field and Hayward, but awesome, fifty-one years. He had thirty-four years of experience before he came to us, and then seventeen years in addition. So, kudos to Paul Hanson. Breaking down our staff a little bit further, as mentioned, those eighteen hundred and four include our teachers, our nurses, counselors, social workers, anyone in the classification of, or the working group SFEA. That represents fifty-seven percent of our population, our staff. Our education assistants total four hundred and seventy-nine for fifteen percent of our staff. Specialists and employment contract workers are two ninety-six for nine point three percent of our staff. Two hundred and four custodians, one hundred and sixty-one clerical, one hundred and forty-two child nutrition workers, eighty-eight administrators, and a partridge in a pear tree, right? So, you can see the total breakdown of how they, they represent our staff. One of those key pieces in our strategic plan has been staff diversity, and we continue to work hard on that with the Teacher Pathway Program, where we're trying to grow our own teachers. But they, that doesn't happen overnight. And so, we're still waiting for the return on investment there, where those young people who are in our classrooms see the value of becoming an educator and decide that pathway for their own future. And so, we continue to work with students who have that passion and hope that one day they will come back to us. And so, we've heard and seen some success stories where we have those, those staff members who were students in our EL program or arrived here not knowing a single bit of English and are now teaching for us. And so, just really get inspired when you hear from, from those folks. And we continue to hope that they will join us for the future and help us increase that diversity, as we know that students, when they are able to look into the eyes of a teacher who looked similar to them, they have something to be proud of and, and to be able to reflect that in, in our school community as well. Our English language learners, the number is up from, I believe the number was twenty-two eighty last year. We're at twenty-seven twenty. Number of languages spoken always teeters around ninety. Those languages, again, a new slide this year. Dr. Stavum asked, what are the languages that we have? These are fifty-two of the standard languages that are identified by the federal government. And then, there are an additional thirty-eight that are a dialect of one of these standard languages. We struggled with the word, what to call these languages, because they're parent languages, but when you say parent, then that's assuming a person standing here. These are the overall languages. And you can see the breakdown of the top five languages spoken in the district. The highest, of course, among those two thousand seven hundred ninety, or twenty students, is forty-two percent of them speak Spanish. And then, the number drops off below ten percent for the next four languages, but still a significant part of our population speaks Nepali, Kunama, Swahili, and Amharic. So, many of our efforts in the past six months specifically have focused on providing information in multiple languages to our families so that they can understand the changes that might be happening due to COVID and such. And so, I think that was a really important light bulb that went off, I think, in our community even, when we helped respond to the Smithfield situation and the COVID situation they had there, and just the community and the city and just various leaders were so appreciative of our school home liaisons who have established relationships with these families who speak other languages so that they could get the correct information and not make assumptions about what they should be doing or how to clean and that type of thing. So, just a very important part of our, our community, and when you see those numbers, you see why. Another special population that we report out on is our special education services. There are over four thousand students from birth to age twenty-one who are served by the Sioux Falls School District. Thirty-six hundred ninety-seven of those are in the K-12 population. Of course, we serve for a variety of needs, preschool age, and then also, we have students eighteen to twenty-one who also stay with us and learn job skills and life skills. These students represent fifteen point three percent of our overall population. And here is a breakdown of the numbers in that area. So, our birth to three in early childhood, four hundred and forty-two. Our K-five special education students, just under two thousand. Eight hundred and twenty-one, sixth through eighth, and seven hundred and forty-four, ninth through twelfth. And then, again, we serve those seventy-one students who are transitioning into adulthood with job skills and, and life skills. Something we started reporting on a bit ago was our 504 plans. In 2012, the American with Disabilities Act expanded the definition of qualifying services for 504s. At that time, when they did that, the Sioux Falls School District served seventy students in 2017. And then, there was a larger study done in 2016 when the district considered adding a 504 coordinator at each building because the numbers had increased or were increasing so much. So, the numbers, yes, are in that four-year time span, which isn't traditionally how we present numbers to you, but those are the numbers we had at the time. And so, when those 504 coordinators in the buildings were brought onboard, we had twelve hundred and three. And today, we are serving twenty-six hundred and twenty-seven students with 504 plans. So, you can see the increase over time, how quickly that happened. Another piece that our community looks to regularly is the free and reduced meals and the qualifications, just, and kind of the breakdown of where those meals are needed most. Our district free and reduced average is forty-four point one percent. You can see the top orange line is at forty-eight point two percent. We believe that those are elementary numbers. We believe that to be the most telling about where the need is. Sometimes, by the time a student gets to middle school or high school, the parent paperwork drops off a little bit, and we don't see as many free and reduced applications being returned to us for whatever reason, whether, you know, the student says, I don't need to eat lunch, or they come up with a different plan, or they're going to have open lunch, and I'll just take a granola bar, or maybe not. So, we look at the forty-eight point two percent as probably the more accurate number of those three, but still hovering around the same percentage as we were last year. Of course, just last week, it was announced that Sioux Falls School District is able to provide free lunches to everyone, no matter the income level, through June thirtieth, 2021. We want to make note and take every opportunity we have to encourage families to still fill out the free and reduced application, because when that distinction runs out from that program on June thirtieth, 2021, the application they'd fill out now will actually carry into October of next year, the end of September, and then a new application is, is needed again. So, when school starts mid to late August next year, if they haven't filled out a free and reduced application right now, or during this school year, then they will be considered full pay. And we just want to, while it's great that we have everybody and everyone is able to eat, no matter their income level, it is an important reminder that those families who have been served by a free and reduced meal program in the past do continue to fill out that application form. So, just take another opportunity to put that out there. The next couple of slides, then, are really a collection of things that you've seen in recent reports, our on-time graduates. I think that was about a month ago it was brought to the board. We are at eighty-five percent. Our completer graduation rate is ninety-four percent, up seven percent over last year, never wanting to give up on, on those students. Who's in that number of graduates? We had a very unusual graduation for the class of 2020, in that it was out on Howard, or out at Howard Woodfield outdoors, but we were able to do it. Fourteen hundred and twenty-five students receiving their diploma in the traditional manner. We had ninety students that graduated with us in more than four years. And again, so important to the district and to all staff members that we see students through to graduation, even if it's not in the four-year cohort, and we do whatever we, we can to help them earn that, that diploma. We had twenty-four GEDs that were awarded in the past year. And so, again, no matter how you do it, whatever your situation looks like, you can count on the school district and the staff members to, to be behind you, walk alongside you, and, and move you past that threshold. And then, our composite ACT scores. Sioux Falls School District continues to score above the state national average, a point above South Dakota, and one point two points above the national average. So, good, strong ACT scores. And again, encouraging all students to take the ACT and just see where they fall. So, that's been a push in the last several years by our high schools. And then, again, how well-prepared are our students for the future? College course readiness sits at fifty-eight percent, assessment readiness at fifty-nine, and combined readiness at forty-three. And so, again, always looking for those numbers to increase over time and reflect the hard work that happens in the schools and among those relationships between students and staff. So, that is the end of the district demographic report, and I will stand by for questions, but if they're very detailed, there might be folks on the outside of the room that can help as well.
I just want to, you talked briefly about the Teacher Pathway Program, and I was able to speak in their classroom last week to their two classes, and it is just a fabulous program and a great way that we can grow. And it was neat to see the students that were involved in that and the questions they had, so I do hope that that continues to help our demographics of staff to increase. And then, you spoke about the lunch program, and I'd encourage families who maybe do not need to have the free lunch if they have money in their lunch account, they could donate to the Angel Fund for Going Forward for Next Year. That's through Joanie Davis at our Child Nutrition Services to help those students next year who might be a reduced lunch or in a gap where they can't qualify, but their family's unable to help. That's the type of funding that is used for at this time. No other questions? Do I have a motion to acknowledge your report?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Teresa, she took some of your thunder.
That's exactly what I was going to say. She took my report. What the heck, Deanna? No, so this is good. When we look at the three reports tonight, we look at the When we look at the three reports tonight, we look at the enrollment report, the demographic report, and then now the accountability report. They really do go together. And so it's a nice segue for my report. Good information. And some of it you've heard before, but it's, we put it all together for you so you can see our state report card. Tonight, that accountability report, really the information is to provide the information for you from the Every Student Succeeds Act as a accountability results from the Sioux Falls School District. And we follow through on the strategic plan and its student outcomes, priority area one, that we provide that rigorous, effective, and engaging curriculum and instruction to emphasize growth and reduce that achievement gap for all students. So on October 7th, the state released, the South Dakota Department of Education released that state report card for 1920. So we can really look at how our students were doing as compared to others across the state. The data in the report card is limited due to the COVID-19 and not being able to give that South Dakota assessment during the spring of 2020. And so we have limited results here, but we do have some great information, and we'll share those with you. Again, limited results, so we know that we usually give that English language assessment. We give the math assessment for grades three through eight and 11, and science in grades five, eight, and 11, and we weren't able to do that. We weren't able to give that alternate math assessment for those same grades. But we did have information on our EL students because we were able to give that access report, um, assessment at, in February. So we do have that information. So again, the performance includes multiple measures in those areas, and we've Xed out the ones we can't, but we do have the completer rate, the graduation rate, which Deanne shared with you, but I'll share again. And we do have our college career readiness scores and our English language learner scores. So graduation rate, for the fourth consecutive year, the Sioux Falls School District increased its graduation rate since 2015, 16. It's increased more than 4%. And the completer rate increased to a five-year high and exceeded the state's average. The completion rate is a percentage of students who graduate or earn their GED by the age of 21. And again, it's, we don't give up. Even if it takes them longer than four years, we continue to strive to make sure everyone receives a diploma, and we do realize that's important for all students. The college and career readiness is compiled of two different areas. We have the readiness score, which has the assessment readiness, and then we have that academic readiness. And when we look at that first side, on the left side, the assessment readiness, that takes into account our South Dakota assessment, our, for reading and math, and then it has the NCRC. And then also a student that has an ACT can be added in there. We get a half a point for students that have achieved those scores on the left side. On the right side, that coursework readiness includes the CTE concentrator. So a student has to complete two courses in that same concentrator, and that's, we have 16 career clusters, and we really have strong coursework in all of those. And so students often will take one course in one career cluster and jump over and take another course in another career cluster, which is a great opportunity for them to explore. But we don't receive a half a point if that is the indicator there. But we want students to have that opportunity to explore different careers. And then dual credit and the AP exam are the other ways that we can receive credit in that indicator. So the Sioux Falls District increased its college coursework readiness from 52% to 58, primarily in that CTE concentrator area. And the assessment readiness indicator results improved from 42 to 59 due to the increase of the students taking the NCRC exam. And again, gave, we're giving that this week in our high schools, and we will continue to see that grow because that's on a lag that that's reported to the state. So the combined college and career readiness indicator improved by 11%. And so great work there on the part of our high schools and making sure people are taking that NCRC. And we've heard from students that when they turn that certificate into an employer, often they get a salary increase. So it is a good part on our part for students to measure that progress, but then also it pays them back as they move into the workforce. English language learners, our progress is assessed through the access test again in February, the end of February, we take that. And it's based on their initial score. If they're placed on that curve and expected to achieve proficiency within five years. The district's measured against those, on those curves. In the 19 and 20 year, 42% of our EL population either exited or were determined to be on track, which is down slightly from the year before. And that was in 1718 was over this line year. And when we think of our whole report card, the state has different designations for schools. And we have, those designations are the comprehensive support, targeted support, and additional targeted support. And we had eight schools that were designated as targeted support, but due to the lack of testing that we were able to perform in the spring of 2020, no changes were made to that. However, we did have three schools that came off that designation, and so we know that those three schools are still on because we couldn't, they didn't reclassify anybody this state. So continue to work on those. They're put on those designations based on the information they have. They're really working on those targeted groups to make sure that all students are growing and closing that gap between the high-performing and the gap students. And with that, I'd stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Seeing those increases is exciting because, you know, we all sat here and said, please start adding that NCRC. So we've seen the benefit of that as well as some other things that we've done. And so I think probably in speaking with you, it sounds like maybe dual credit maybe is our next gateway to kind of maybe get those other scores up there to, for students in that college and career readiness.
That is, continue to explore those dual credit opportunities. Last year, we added college algebra to one high school for dual credit, and we had one course. And this year, we have eight classrooms across the district for dual credit for college algebra. So if we can continue to look for those opportunities for students in those core academic areas that any student moving on to post-secondary can benefit from, that's really where we can make gains for our students.
I was just going to say, you know, we talked about earlier, you know, 100 students is for kindergarten classes. And when you look at the graduation rate, I don't know that any, you know, kindergarten, they're looking at 100 kids. Nobody wants to pick out the 15 kids who aren't going to graduate on time. And so I look at the progress that we've made over the last few years, and it has been very positive. And then having now, we only would have seven kids out of that 100 that would not graduate. At least they would graduate not on time. We'd have seven that wouldn't do any of that. And so I think both of those numbers together are very positive and something that we can, you know, continue as you, as we mentioned, we're going to meet again and kind of fine-tune some of those strategies. So how can we look at what has been successful and what new things can we look at in kind of our new age of technology and, and things like that to make sure that we can get that number to be as low as possible and really, like you said, not give up on anybody, but try to get them all the way to that finish line and help them to be, you know, successful in their adult life too, so.
Any other comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to acknowledge your report?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The report passes. Thank you, Teresa.
Last but not least, a picture of our first quarter financial report from Todd Beek.
Thank you, Dr. Savin. Yeah, in your board materials, you have the financial report through September, which of course is a quarter of our way through our fiscal year, but not very far at all into our school year. So our expenditures at that time are only about 15.4%. So it's real hard to get a fix on, on how those might end up. As you know, we've had several expenses related to COVID in the general fund and the Capilale Fund. So touch on that just briefly. But one thing I will add is from Mr. Morrison's report, you saw that we were down in the enrollment, and we had actually projected an increase, a slight increase. So we are, between being down and not having the increase we had budgeted for, that's about $2.8 million in the general fund where we will be off on state aid. Of course, we did get some COVID relief money. We've got close to, well, between 15 and 16 million of, of COVID relief money. We have so, you know, significant expenditures involved in that. We've identified most of those. There's still probably a few to come, but we are trying to, to balance the budget based on that COVID relief money and kind of limit, limiting some of the ongoing expenses associated with our COVID relief. Some of the things we've done this year are going to generate ongoing expenditures as well, trying to take that into account. Good news is in the special ed fund, they're funded on last year's IDEA count, at the December 1 count. So our state aid prediction is pretty accurate there. Again, with their expenditures, they've even had, they've only spent 9.8% of their budget. But, but we do know the main part of their funding is, is accurate. And then last but not least, Capilale Fund, we are thinking we're going to be about a half a million high on property taxes this year. The valuation grew faster than we had assumed, so that is good news in that fund. With that, I'd ask you to acknowledge the, the report on the first quarter expenditure or budget report for the board and on standby for questions. Thanks.
Any questions? Seeing no questions at this time, do I have a motion to approve the first quarter financial report?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. We'll move on to the policy, second reading on policy BEDH. Kate?
Yes. Yes, we've got two policies that are back for second reading. The first one is BEDH, Public Participation at School Board Meetings. We updated language to combine, combine public input on agenda and non-agenda items. We did not receive any comments on that. And then the other policy that's up for second reading is JCA and its accompanying regulation, assignment of students to school, open enrollment and non-resident students. We updated language to account for new schools, clarify language about assigning students to schools and specialized programs, and add a placement option for children of staff, staff members that reside inside the district. These policies, but we did receive comment on the JCA, just asking us to consider the expansion of the all-city elementary students to not be terminated after the end of the program, but to allow them to continue on as a cohort to Edison Middle School. But with that, I think that our policy is good and sound. I would move for approval for both policies. The other.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have just a couple of thoughts. First, I want to thank Kate and Carly for the work on the, on the policy committee. And I'm just curious if the policy committee could explore the impact of allowing teachers that flexibility of choice of school. So it'd really just be broadening that language as opposed to just where they teach, perhaps having a wider selection of which school to send their children based upon what works best for that family dynamic. This would not include the specialty schools as they have their own enrollment policy in place, but just that we can look at what serves their particular family dynamic and broadening that language to offer more flexibility, just what that impact would look like, if it's something we can.
Thank you, Nan. Yeah, after, and if, since we've had this out for public comment and so forth for the 30 days, if we could vote on this, this evening and approve it, and then have that further researched maybe after that going forward.
Great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I mean, I think that the important thing to consider is these policies are always evolving. This is something that we talked about during our policy committee meeting, and, you know, something kind of new. And I think the thought was, let's try this, let's see if it is, you know, truly convenient for, for teachers and staff to have their, to have their kids placed at the schools that they teach at. And we can always revise it later, you know, next year after we can see what the impact is. So, I mean, I think that's important to note that these policies are always living, breathing documents that are up for review at any time.
Thank you. And just to make clear, I very much support it as is, and thank you for acknowledging that it's a dynamic piece of, you know, body of policy and that we can continue to explore that particular section of policy. Thanks.
And for those watching at home, just to clarify, so on the current policy, the in-building teacher of a non-specialized school will have the ability to have their student child to attend school at that building. What, and, and that's how it's currently written and approved this evening would go into effect. What Nan Baker was suggesting is maybe looking at expanding that at more levels than just at the building placement that that teacher is. Thank you. Correct?
Correct. Just to make sure, I would first just explore what that impact would look like and if it truly is in the best interest of all, all the moving pieces. And then from there, do an assessment if it's best to change that policy.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. We have, we had motion seconds, we'll have a vote. All those in favor of this second reading of policy BEDH and JCA-JCA-R signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those two policies are adopted. Do I have a motion to move into executive session per SDCL 1-25-2 per and three?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will move to executive session.